Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 15th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for May 15th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. Let's see. Just mute someone quick.
We're not actually driving anywhere, just so anybody knows.
It looks like he was just muted there. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmembers Farber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Resnick?
Here.
Rousseau?
Here.
Sprank?
Here.
Wethel?
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan?
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to presentations. Our first presentation is ICMA YCILI fellow presentation.
Good evening. Corey Burbach, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I have the pleasure of doing two really fun presentations tonight. So the first one, we have a guest who has been in Dubuque. I can't believe this is his fourth week here already. Dr. Do Tung Tung, did I say that right?
Nope.
Okay, I've been practicing. Dr. Tung is with us through the Young Southeast Asia Leadership Initiative. That is a program, for those of you in the room who have been around for a while, that we've hosted fellows in Dubuque for many years, and we're really excited about it. It is a program that has two tracks, one in governance and one in sustainability, and young leaders from across Southeast Asia come to the United States to learn about those topics and bring what they learn back to their communities. So it's a program that is hosted in the United States by the U.S. State Department, and it is managed by the International City Managers Association. So that's why we have the pleasure of hosting fellows here. We have had fellows from all over Southeast Asia come to us through ICMA. We've also hosted fellows from Australia and from, we have both sent staff from Dubuque to the Dominican Republic and had visitors from that country as well. So Dr. Tung has been here studying sustainable agriculture for the past three weeks. We have one more week before he'll go back to Washington, D.C. for a week. We've kept him busy, I think, with a combination of meetings, sometimes with you all or some of the staff in the room, to talk about the policy side of things and talk about why community engagement is so important to sustainability, but then we've been spending a lot of time looking at different scales of agriculture. So everything from some of our community gardens here in the city to visiting some of our neighboring farmers, organic farmers, who are vendors at our farmer's market, to visiting with some of the universities across the state to learn about practices that Tung can bring back to his country. So Tung, would you like to say anything to council tonight?
So good evening, everyone. So I'm Do Tung Tung. I'm from Vietnam. I'm a lecturer at the Taiwan University of Agriculture and Forestry. So I'm a YCILI fellow, 2023. I'm very happy to be here with you tonight, and I have very good time for Dubuque, and you know, time flies so fast, so I have only one week to be in Dubuque. For the last thing, I want to say I'm very happy and thank you so much for your hospitality and very friendly and helped me like very good experience in Dubuque. Thank you so much.
And I believe via all of the awesome technology that we have, that Tung's wife and daughter and son might get to see this, so I want to make sure that we say hello to them as well, and thanks for sharing their dad.
Yes, Dr. Tung, thank you very much for being here this evening and for being with us in Dubuque for so many weeks. I think all of us, if not most of us, have had a chance to sit with you and get to know you a little bit, and I hope you've, it sounds like you've enjoyed your time and gathered a lot of great information, which is wonderful, and I'm very happy that your wife and family were able to join tonight to be able to see this. I'm sure that while you've really enjoyed yourself, it's probably getting close to time to go home as well, so I can totally understand that feeling. But thank you so much for being here this evening and for being with us. So thank you. And let's all give Dr. Tung a round of applause, please.
Our second presentation is the 2023 Employee Spirit Awards Recognition.
Corey Burbach, Assistant City Manager. Last meeting that we were at, you all recognized Public Service Recognition Week, so thank you for the chance to share a little bit more about some of our amazing staff tonight. So last week, I know that many of you were at our annual employee luncheon, and one of the things that we do at that luncheon is we give out what we call the Spirit Awards. So the Spirit Awards are a program created by our staff to recognize each other in the field. Sometimes they see things that might not make it to a way of being publicly recognized, so our staff can nominate each other in the values of the spirit statement. And spirit statement was created by staff to identify the way in which we go about our work. So you all set our mission and vision for us every year and tell us what we're trying to achieve, and spirit tells us as staff how we go about doing that. So spirit stands for service, people, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and teamwork. That's how we get our work done every day at the City of Dubuque. And we have a committee that reviews the nominations. This year, there were almost 80 nominations. That's 10% of our workforce that was nominated because one of their colleagues saw them doing something amazing in the field, and that number alone is really exciting for me. So we have a number of staff here this evening who were winners last week, and I'd ask them if they would come up to the front of the room so that when I read this list of awesome humans, you can see what their faces look like. Way up front. All right, now, not everyone was able to be here tonight, so I'm going to give you the full list of winners, but if you hear your name and you could give a wave to everybody, that would be awesome. So the Service Award stands for staff that are responsive to the community. It's called the Considerate Done Award, and this award this year goes to Steve Faisal in the Leisure Services Department. The People Award recognizes the way that we care for each other and for the community, and we call this award the highest of the High Fives Award. The People Award goes to Christina Snyder in the Housing Department. The first "I" in spirit stands for integrity, and this goes to an individual who represents honesty in all the work they do. We call it the Constant Contributor Award. And the Integrity Award this year went to Mackenzie Flanagan in the Health Department, and I believe it's her birthday tonight, which is a really good reason to not be here. I think she's out celebrating. Our stands for responsibility. We're accountable to the public and each other, and we call this the MacGyver Award, and it goes to Carla Escobar and Lena Barton, Lisa Barton, forgive me, in the Housing Department this year. The second "I" is the Innovation Award, and this is for an individual, and I should say, as you're hearing me give these awards, it can go to an individual or a team of folks. Folks have the ability to recognize a group of folks as well, and so these are folks who look for a better way to get the work done. It's called the Big Bang Award, and it goes to Jesse Bernhardt in the Water Department this year. And then "T" stands for teamwork. We work together every day to get our work done, and we call this the Cloud Nine Collaborator Award. This year, it was a big team, and it is a cross-department team, which is really fun to see. So this goes to the group of folks who did all of the work behind the scenes to hire the staff to be able to open our two pools this year. So a lot of parents and kids are really excited about you all right now. And it goes to Dan Kroger and Janne Bowe in Leisure Services, Amanda Copus and Keisha Doherty in Human Resources, Kristen Hill, Felicia Carner, Kelly Buchanaw, and Randy Gale in the Public Information Office. So that spells spirit. You'd think that's the end of my awards, but it's not. The committee came up with another award, the first year they developed this program, and we call it the Ultimate City Employee Award. So of all those nominations that come in under different letters, we pick, we say one, but we've said two every year because they're so good and we can't get it down to one, two awards that we call the Circle of Excellence winners, and those folks are the folks that quite often we read the nomination and we say, yes, that's one of the letters, but they're really exemplifying all of the spirit statement. And so we recognize those folks as the best of the best, so to speak. So there are two Circle of Excellence Award winners this year. The first is Jody Lukens in our Fire Department, and the second is the biggest team we've ever awarded any of our awards to, frankly, but they have done a phenomenal job this year, and that is the Public Works Team along with some assists from our GIS Department for the citywide Tipper Cart rollout. And you all have seen photos and videos and maps and know the numbers behind all of the work. So we have a couple of our Public Works folks here tonight. As part of your packet, you can see the letters that have all those nominations in, as can the public. So I would really encourage you, if you know a city staff person or if you see one on the street, to take a minute and recognize them for Public Service Recognition Week, particularly join me in congratulating our spirit winners tonight.
Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. We really appreciate the work you do every single day, and you can go ahead. It's fine. You're already there. You're already on the move. Make it happen. So just, you know, I want to say that, you know, in a time like now, when you think about public service and what that really means, we're kind of in a place where we depersonalize it a lot. You know, we think of the government, the big bad government, all the time. We don't think about the people that are behind that. We don't think about the human faces of the neighbors who live right next door to us that are doing this work every single day. And quickly becoming one of my favorite days of the year is the Employee Recognition Luncheon that we have, where we go through two different lunches and be able to recognize all the employees who come through. And for me personally, you know, as a resident of Dubuque, I get to see, and we all get to see, how many people make this happen every single day. It's a huge number of people, and they're all doing a very worthwhile, extremely important public service for all of us who live here. So thank you to every city employee and everyone who's there for the recognition, all the award winners for the extra work that you've done this year. We sincerely appreciate it, and we hope that we show that, and we hope that we continue to work as well to collaborate with you as we possibly can, but then also sincerely appreciate it as a resident of this city. It's a very good city that we live in, and thank you very much for making it that way. Adrian, thank you.
We will move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Salvation Army Week.
All right, well, Captain David Amick, is it Amick? Amick, all right, got it right, yes. Captain David Amick is here to accept this proclamation with a team from the Salvation Army. If there's anything you'd like to say before I read the proclamation, you can feel free.
Well, we'd like to say thank you for this proclamation. We appreciate the fact that there's an acknowledgement of Salvation Army Week, and we want you to know that we're here to help the community. It's not about us, it's not about anything that we do, we want to make sure that we're giving back to the community, so.
Well, thank you very much for doing that work and giving back to the community the way you do, and I'm glad we're able to celebrate this with you today with this proclamation.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the Salvation Army operates more than 7,500 centers in communities across the United States, including Dubuque, Iowa, and whereas the highly spiritual and humanitarian role of the Salvation Army has long been an important part of American life, and the Salvation Army of Dubuque has served the community for over 135 years. And whereas this week of recognition was first declared by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1954, 74 years after the Salvation Army arrived in the U.S., who stated in his proclamation, "Among Americans, the Salvation Army has long been a symbol of wholehearted dedication to the cause of human brotherhood. Their work has been a constant reminder to us all that each of us is neighbor and kin to all Americans, giving freely of themselves. The men and women of the Salvation Army have won the respect of us all." And whereas, "Through its welfare and religious institutions in our country, the Salvation Army has befriended, aided, and given new hope to men, women, and children, regardless of race or creed. And whereas, the Salvation Army of Dubuque provides services to the community through its client-choice food pantry, mobile food pantry, pantry garden, senior activities, student activities, summer fan program, book club, Christmas food and toy program for children, church, emergency disaster services, the National Pathway of Hope Program, which guides residents to achieve sustainable lives. And whereas, the Salvation Army of Dubuque will host a ribbon-cutting and pancake breakfast on July 1st at 10:00 AM to celebrate the arrival of its new emergency disaster services vehicle and EDS team to better service Dubuque and surrounding communities. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Salvation Army Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa." Come on up. We can give him a hand.
Our second proclamation is Kids to Parks Day.
All right. Very popular Steve Faisal is here to join us today.
Good evening, Steve Faisal, Park Division Manager. Kids to Parks Day is a national day of outdoor play, celebrated annually on the third Saturday in May by the National Park Trust. This year, that is this Saturday, May 20th. The day is designed and intended to connect kids and families with their local, state, and national parks and public lands. 2023 marks the 13th anniversary of Kids to Parks Day, and I encourage all kids and families to go check out a local park, trail, or green space. The Parks and Recreation Commission has approved to waive the fee at Eagle Point Park this Saturday, so get out and enjoy the great outdoors.
Well, thank you very much, Steve, for all the work that you do every day and for keeping those parks looking so good, because it's that time of year, isn't it? I mean, we're really enjoying them out there. I'm seeing kids in the parks every single day, so thank you for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, May 20th, 2023, is the 13th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol. And whereas, physical activity is a key to good health, and increased use of parks and green spaces is essential to health and wellness of children and adults. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 20th day of May 2023 as Kids to Parks Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge residents to make time on May 20th to take the children in their household to a neighborhood, state, or national park. Thanks so much.
Our third proclamation is Public Works Week.
The even, well, just as popular, Public Works staff, right, coming up here to accept this proclamation?
Thank you very much for your time tonight, recognizing Public Works Week. We're excited. We'll be at the farmer's market next Saturday, or this Saturday coming up. We hope you spend some time with us and join us, but Public Works Week really recognizes more employees than just Public Works employees. It recognizes all the employees that work on maintaining the infrastructure and designing, so that would be Engineering in Dubuque, Water and Resource Recovery Center, Water Department, and the Park Division, in particular, those employees. So we thank you for your time. We'd like to hope we can see you all at Farmer's Market this week. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, John, and all the times to recognize this department. I think this is a great one. I mean, you have had a busy couple of months, have you not? So thank you very much for all the work that you've done with the Tipper Cart rollout, all the regular work you do, and then obviously making sure that flood wall kept the Mississippi River where the Mississippi River was supposed to stay. So thank you for all your work and for accepting this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023, has been designated as National Public Works Week by the American Public Works Association, with the theme "Connecting the World Through Public Works," to celebrate the vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Dubuque via Public Works Professionals' focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in the City of Dubuque to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, we recognize that the services provided by the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, and that the efficiency of personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa.
Our final proclamation is LGBTQ+ Pride Month.
All right, we have Sarah Peterson, Indigo Channing, and Councilmember Danny Sprank here to accept this proclamation. And a few more people.
And everybody else.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sarah Peterson, Assistant Director at the Multicultural Family Center with the Leisure Services Department. Thank you so much for having us here today. This is some of our committee members that we've been meeting since September, I believe. We have a great event coming up on Saturday, June 3rd. It's a block party and family picnic. It's on 11th Street between Central and Iowa from 12:00 to 3:00, right after the farmer's market, so come on over and celebrate with us. We're super excited this year, and we also have the parking lot next to that, too, so all kinds of fun food and family-friendly items, and yeah, do you want to say anything? Anybody else? Okay.
Danny is speechless for one of the first times I've ever met Danny. Thank you so much for being here this evening and for working so hard to make this possible. The party was so big last year that you had to move it outside, I understand, so that's great. And thank you for the community for supporting this, this day and Pride Month, and just for all the work that we're all trying to do together. So thank you for being here to accept this proclamation this evening. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, the City of Dubuque is a progressive and inclusive community that celebrates culture and heritage and supports efforts to ensure everyone has the right to live in conditions of dignity, respect, and peace. And whereas, the City of Dubuque strives to offer our residents a safe community and to put an end to taunting, bullying, and intolerance. And whereas, the City of Dubuque advocates for the elimination of all forms of discrimination and displays a commitment to the equal treatment of all people, we recognize the need for intersectionality and work towards social justice, as we understand there is no true equality until there is equity for all. And whereas, the City of Dubuque understands the importance for LGBTQ+ people to have access to excellent healthcare in LGBTQ-affirmative environments, the necessity to have the legal and institutional freedom to pursue their own lives as they wish, and the need to have their freedom and desire affirmed by the rest of the world. And whereas, this proclamation in and of itself sends a positive message of validation to LGBTQ+ residents of Dubuque that the city embraces these individuals and their families as a part of the community. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon the residents of Dubuque to observe this month with programs, activities, and ceremonies in recognition of our city's diversity, as well as the Pride Family Picnic and Block Party on June 3rd from noon to 3:00 PM, held outside the Multicultural Family Center at the corner of 11th Street and Central Avenue.
I have a photographer.
Everybody come on up. I'm a little taller than everybody, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, Adrian.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. We have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? All right, seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
No, virtually. And no input received.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to the table. I'd like to actually hold number 18, please, for separate discussion. Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick?
Okay, I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 18.
Second by...
Nice try. I got a motion by Resnick, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. So on to number 18. So I'm holding this because I wanted to just kind of open a discussion that I think is going to be an ongoing one. So this is a review of House File 718 and its impact on the City of Dubuque. I first want to say thank you very much to Jenny Larson, our CFO here in Dubuque, for being able to, for taking the time to do this and actually taking a look at what this impact is going to be. The reason I wanted to hold this is because I want to make sure that we're making something clear as we move forward, so that as this discussion occurs over time, it's not a surprise to anybody. While I, like anybody else, very much appreciate the idea of being able to have some tax relief regarding property taxes, there's an effect that it's going to have on cities across the entire state. So this House File actually, in a number of different ways, is going to impact city budgets over the next few years. And it's been very celebrated. I think it's important that we try to create tax relief when possible in our state, but one of the things that's been challenging is that houses, property assessments have gone up very high, very fast, in the last couple of years, and I think it's been pretty scary for people. I know that, you know, I think, I speak for most of us when we say that if you own a home, you own some property, you've seen those assessments go up. I want to make it clear, too, that those assessments don't mean that you're automatically going to pay that much more in taxes. There are a lot of mechanisms in place in the state of Iowa already that affect how we pay property taxes and how those taxes are calculated. One of the things that this bill does point out, though, in this analysis that Ms. Larson has done for us, it shows that at the very least right now, we know for a fact that over $400,000 is going to be impacted in our city's budget going forward, and it's probably going to be more than that, because there are going to be some situations that basically take the rise in property assessments and knock those down a notch or two to make it so cities don't have as much to work with. The reason that this is important, that we talk about this out loud, is because what that means is we are not going to be able to invest as much in the City of Dubuque as we would like to or as we might need to in years ahead, potentially. And this is going to happen across the state of Iowa as well. So politically, there are a lot of different things that, you know, that are thrown back and forth about why these are good or bad ideas, but what I just want to make really clear as we start to talk about this is that this will impact the City of Dubuque's budget, and we need to be ready for it. There's just no way around that. We need to be prepared to know that we're not going to be able to... to know that we're not going to be able to invest as much as we would like to or as that we have in years past. So, as we start talking about this from a budgetary standpoint, and we start to think about what our goals are in August and how we're going to budget for those come February and March, this, this will have an impact. And, and as we have those discussions, I'll keep bringing this up, and I'm guessing that the, my city council colleagues will as well, because I want to make it really clear that some of these choices are out of our hands at this point. We're not able to do the things that we would really like to be able to do to continue the investment in this great community. And, and a big reason for that is because of what has happened in this bill. So, I look forward to, and I want to, I see Ms. Farber over here waiting to say something, too, but I do look forward to continuing to work with our legislators. Our local legislators here have been wonderful in sitting at the table and having discussions with us about the impacts and what this is going to mean for the city of Dubuque, both before and after this bill was passed. I want to make that really clear, and I want to thank them publicly for their work with us. And I look forward to continuing those discussions because I do think that we have some hard ones ahead of us to try and figure out how this is going to impact our city and what it's going to mean for what we're able to invest in the future in the things that we really need here. So, I just wanted to point that out and make sure that we talk about it and start here because I didn't want to just receive and file a bill and just, and then the analysis of it and not really have a discussion about it. So, thank you very much for that time. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up and for the socialization of the importance of this change. And I want to also thank Jenny for all the hard work that she has done. However, I do believe that we may want and think about a work session to better understand all of the intricacies and all the nuances of this new bill because there's just a lot there to unfold. And I think it would be educational, not only for the residents of the city of Dubuque, but also for us as we go through our deliberations and just was, wanted to tee that up as a potential for us to have at some point in time.
I agree. I think that's a really good idea. And I know that we're not even close to being done with the analysis yet of everything that this, this could really impact. I know the Iowa League of Cities is also working on how this is going to impact cities across the state. So, as we do that, I do think it would be a good idea that we talk more about it and have a work session as we know more information.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Be, be very clear. We've been calling this House File 718, but it's no longer a House File. This is the law of Iowa. It's passed the House. It's passed the Senate. It was signed by the governor. So, it's, it's not just a bill anymore. We, we're so used to calling it that because we've been wrestling it for several weeks now, but it's, it's now law.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to be able to receive and file this, please.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Farber.
Second.
A second by Mr. Jones. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing, and we have three. First is sale of city-owned property at 1559 Washington Street for June 5th, 2023. Second is old highway road water main installation project. Initiate public bidding and set the public hearing date for June 5th, 2023. And third is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and McCoy Group Incorporated, LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to McCoy Group Incorporated and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for June 20th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Equity and Human Rights Commission and the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Okay, so the first appointment for the Equity and Human Rights Commission, we have one, three-year term through January 1st, 2024. And we, two, three, four, five, six applicants there. So, what I will do is ask Adrienne to please call the roll, and each of us can name the person we would like to appoint to this commission. If we have some sort of a tie, we'll go back to the table and figure that one out.
Wethel.
Michaela Freiberger.
Resnick.
Teresa Sampson Brown.
Rousell.
Teresa Sampson Brown.
Jones.
Teresa Sampson Brown.
Sprank.
Teresa Sampson Brown.
Farber.
Teresa Sampson Brown.
Kavanaugh.
Teresa Sampson Brown. So, Teresa Sampson Brown is appointed to the term on the Equity and Human Rights Commission through 2024. The second commission appointment we have is the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission. We have one, three-year term through July 1st, '25, and one applicant, Cliff Conrad. So, I will entertain a motion on this one, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that Cliff Conrad be appointed to the vacant three-year term on the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Cliff Conrad is appointed to the three-year term through July 1st, 2025 on the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Municipal Services Center EV Charging Stations Project. Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Move that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Rousell.
Got a motion by Farber and a second by Rousell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Public Works Director John Klosterman is recommending city council adopt the resolution authorizing the approval of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $134,670 for the Municipal Services Center EV Charging Stations Project. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request, Mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of $134,670 for the Municipal Services Center EV Charging Stations Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one. Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Okay.
And no input received.
All right. Bring it back to the table then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. Yes, I read a lot about different charging systems, whether they be, you know, the way we're doing it now or in the future. So, I'm, I'm hoping that someone maybe could talk to us about what they feel the law, the short-term, midterm, and long-term prospects of electric vehicles are with all these different options that are being developed. There are some, there are some science writers who say that electric vehicles won't be around but maybe 10 or 15 years, and others think they'll be here for the long term. So, I'm just hoping that before we spend over $100,000 that we're, we're pretty solid that these electric vehicles are going to be around for a while. It'll be worth the investment. Thank you.
Good evening. John Klosterman, Public Works Director. So, as we look at the city fleet in total, right now, we're going to look at what we know is there. Right now, there's electric vehicles, cars. Electric trucks are starting to roll out. And that's our focus, especially with this project here. It's a phased-in project, so we're going to take our time and see how it goes, see how we can build our fleet. There's continuous interest and a lot of work going on with larger fleet that we would have in public works, mid-sized trucks. But I don't think we're there yet. These charging stations won't be used for that, at least right now. Future project could involve that. Would probably take some more investment into the infrastructure in order to do that. But in the same way that we looked at CNG and we, when we took a step towards CNG, we're going to take that next step toward electric vehicles.
Great. And thank you very much. So, we're responding to immediate need, which is important. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. I'm wondering, John, if perhaps you could give us some insights on to how these electric vehicles help us with our greenhouse gas goals and, and how that benefits our community.
Well, you know, one thing that we've always looked at as far as clean air, and that's, we looked at a lot of different things. The coal plant is now gone, and it really comes down to the vehicles that we use, not only in the city fleet, but overall in the city and the choices that we make. So, you know, we feel that electric vehicles definitely will take a step toward the cleaner air than what our current fleet system does.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mike.
Our Sustainability Coordinator, Gina Bell, is on virtual. If you would like her to respond.
Gina, go ahead.
Well, maybe she's just texting me and not actually on...
She is communicating.
Good answer, John.
In a more modern way.
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on one second. Farber. We don't, we don't have her on. Okay. We'll, we'll see if she, if she's able to join us, or maybe, Mike, you can fill us in here. I'm, I'll move on to Ms. Farber here for a moment. So, Ms. Farber.
Just one quick question. And, John, we had discussed this previously. You had mentioned that these are going to be stations where you could actually fuel or fuel or charge, if you will, two cars at the same time, if I remember. And at one point, we had talked about accessibility for those of us in the public that have electric cars. And are we going to be able to use these? And if so, how would we pay for that usage?
Yeah, so right now, these, this project will just be for the city fleet. And that will, in the same way that we charge back our, our gasoline and our diesel to the different departments, these costs would also be charged back to the departments. Now, for the private sector, there's several charging stations, or at least in the works, one down in the port area and one possibly even at, at this facility. So, those projects are, are still being drawn up, and, and other locations are also being looked at. So, more to come.
Okay, thank you for that. I look forward to the more to come.
Thank you. And Ms. Rousell, I apologize. Did you, did you have anything else? I stole the floor from you and gave it to Ms. Farber, but do you have anything else that you wanted to ask?
Well, I, I just think it's important for our community to know that there are additional benefits of, of adding electric vehicles to our fleet that help us achieve our climate action goals that maybe aren't, you know, readily apparent when you're just looking at, at particular costs. But I think, I think it's just important to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell.
Gina Bell is on now.
Gina Bell's on now. Okay. Gina, we're, we're ready for you.
Hi, Gina Bell, Sustainability Coordinator. My apologies for my technical difficulties.
That's okay.
So, I just want to say that you've, you've covered a lot of what we've talked about in the Climate Action Plan. We want clean air. We want to reduce our greenhouse gases. We've set the goal, not only the overarching goal to reduce our greenhouse gases by 50%, but also we have a goal of 50% of electric vehicles within our city fleet by 2030. And also support and encourage alternative fuel vehicles. And then we have community-wide goals as well. And all of that will help us greatly reduce our greenhouse gases, but then also those co-benefits that Councilwoman Rousell is talking about in terms of clean air. And also, we want to encourage active transportation. And so, it's all interconnected in what we're doing and the different efforts that we're putting forth, and this is one part of all of that.
Thank you very much, Gina, for adding all that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I, I own a plug-in hybrid electric vehicle. And I drive it around all day and do all my local errands on electricity that I put into it overnight the night before. If I want to point it to Chicago or Des Moines, I steer it that direction and burn some gas, and away we go. And it, it's, it's by far the most efficient combination of things I've ever owned. When you look at the city fleet mission, it's mostly local running. It's short trips around town. It's a perfect, and it's a vehicle that's probably parked most of the night. It's a perfect place for an electric vehicle. And I appreciate the modesty of this proposal. We're looking at four stations. We're looking at some vehicles. We're going to learn what's going on. And everybody that's brought this up is right. There's a lot of technology brewing out there. And my personal belief, from my research, is that hydrogen fuel cells are probably going to be the answer. But how quickly we can get to, to that answer is, is, is still an unknown. I thought that compressed natural gas would be the fuel of this decade to get us to electric. But electric came very, very fast. And with all of the motor vehicle designers in the whole world frantically working to build the best battery and to build the best system and everything, we're pretty close to getting there. I want to share a couple of, a quick stats from a New York Times article not too long ago. Does say that EVs start with a bigger carbon footprint, but it doesn't last. And, and then they say, but that's just like your opinion. And I said, no, it's not. It's fact. About 1.4 to 1.5 years for sedans, and you've completely overcome the production carbon that the EV has, has created. And from there on, it's about 87 to 91% energy efficiency. The energy that you put in the vehicle coming back out in locomotion, motion of the vehicle. An internal combustion vehicle delivers about 16 to 25% into motion from the energy that you put into it. So, it's explosively better in fuel economy and everything else. So, these vehicles are going to be more expensive, the charging stations, similarly too expensive to put in a gas pump, probably less expensive by far. And I think that if we're leaders, we have to lead by trying things that others aren't. And that's, that's why I'm a big proponent of moving in this direction. This, this isn't a good answer yet for everything. I don't think we could reliably put police vehicles or fire engines out with electric power yet. They're built, and it's done, but I, I think they're, I think the longevity of charge is not there for those applications. It certainly is for this application, for inspectors to go out and make the runs and everything. And man, my, my car, just, you get in it, you quietly go out of the garage, you drive it around all day, plug it in at night. My energy costs have dropped dramatically. My electrical costs have not gone up dramatically. I did put a Level 2's charging station in my garage to support that vehicle. I'm having a real good time with it. I'm having an outstanding result with it. And I think this is a good move. And I'm glad it's a modest move because we might see fuel cells or some other thing that we haven't thought of yet coming around, down the pike. And certainly, the global research on battery technology is, is coming fast and frantic, and it's getting better and better by the week. So, things, things are changing, and that's the, the nature of our world right now. I'll just close quickly by saying I just had a crew at my house that put up a new fence, and they used a lot of power tools. And they didn't have to plug one thing in in the two days they were there. Everything was battery, the sawzalls. The, oh, they burned a little gas on the driver that drove the post in, but everything else was cordless, battery-powered, and did a pretty great job, as is just about every other power tool in the world anymore. So, it's a good move and a good direction. I'm sorry for taking so much time. Been working, been doing a lot, a lot, a lot of reading about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Wethel.
My goal is to always be a good steward with taxpayer dollars. And so, when I simplify this for myself, my husband and I bought a house that was built in 1901, and the boiler was quite inefficient. And so, although we needed to invest quite a bit of money in buying a new boiler, we knew that in the long run, it would help us to have more efficiency in the winter months to heat our home. To me, this is no different than that in a long-term range in that our goal is to look at the money that we have to spend on our city vehicles and make sure that in the long term, we can be as efficient as possible. I would like you to speak, just if you would, Mr. Klosterman, to the collaboration that has happened with incorporation of EV vehicles and in the decision-making process for the future, because I've been impressed with it. What I'm thinking of is considering, yes, the cost of investment in vehicles and charging stations, but also the research that multiple different departments have done on efficiency, on what the maintenance requirements would be, how we would train our staff in maintenance, as well as the necessity in how fire would need to be incorporated, and even looking into how would we plan for an event such as a fire of a vehicle. So, and maybe that is a question for others as well, but...
John, would you let Gina answer if you want?
Gina, is she on?
Yep.
Yeah, Gina Bell, if you're still on, would you go with that one? Okay. I think we lost her, sorry.
Loser, okay.
Can probably touch on probably a few of those things. I know that Tony Breitbach and, and many others are looking at the purchasing side for vehicles and, you know, what is the right cost of that, what the payback is on that. On the training side for our, our fleet technicians, which are public works employees, Tom Keel has looked into that, and what's the next step on that. It's hard to train on... It's hard to train on something until we have something in place, but in the same way, that's the same staff that, you know, researched and got the tools they needed and the training they needed to handle the CNG conversion that we have on a couple of trucks. I have full confidence that we'll do the same pattern and do the same thing, to train those employees on electrical vehicles.
And I can tell you that our Sustainability Coordinator Gina Bell has led a, a citywide effort to research the, the benefits of making this move and beginning this transition. And the mayor and city council made a major policy decision through last year's budget process, and that was to give carbon a value. So we do have a goal to reduce our carbon footprint 50% by 2030, and that does have an economic impact, but so does the carbon. And so the council agreed through last year's budget process to give that carbon a value so that as we do our life cycle cost of our vehicles, that, that that is taken into consideration. And so I, I feel comfortable that we're doing the right research, we're finding out the right information, and we're also implementing this in a responsible way.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
If I could speak for a second to, to the fire risk. It is substantial. An electric vehicle, battery fire is, is a lot of fire. A full gas tank can make a lot of fire as well. But the instance is a little bit over-reported. It's a big deal when someone's Tesla burns down their house because it caught fire in the garage. It's, it's widely reported, everybody hears about it, and everybody says, boy, Teslas, Teslas go up like birthday cakes. But it's simply, you know, the thing is, it's not true. About 1,530 incidents per 100,000 internal combustion vehicles catch fire each year, and only about 25 fires per 100,000 electric vehicles per year. So substantially less fire risk, but a more intense fire if you, and localized fire if you get one. It's kind of like, like the pit bull question. Pit bulls get bad press. Every time they eat a kid, it's in the paper. But more Labrador retrievers bite people than, than any other dog, because guess what? There's more of them. Mine hasn't bit me yet.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
So I'll just, I'll just add my piece to this, too. And I want to begin by saying that I'm still upset that my car doesn't fly, because Back to the Future told us that was going to happen in 2015, and it just never happened. So that is upsetting to me. However, we, we have been, over the decades, a leader on this, in, in this issue, on sustainability and making sure that, you know, we had a, a greenhouse gas reduction plan, a climate action plan. This council has made the climate action plan implementation a high priority for, or one of the higher top priorities for this year. But frankly speaking, we're behind on this one. You know, I'm going to conferences at the university, or the United States Conference of Mayors and National League of Cities. The coasts are way ahead of the Midwest on this, and large cities are way ahead of small cities on this. We're getting some assistance from the federal government to be able to implement this and have the finances to do it. But if we want to talk about where we're at as term, in terms of a leader, we're not in first place on this one. We need to catch up. And I would like us to, I'd like to see us invest even more than this, but I completely understand that this is what we are able to do right now, because this type of infrastructure is a partnership. We can't build this electrical infrastructure ourselves in the city. We have to work with our electric provider, we have to work with our, our county, we have to work with our community, our state, everybody to do this. But I'd like to see us push ahead. As, you know, as Mr. Jones said, if we want to be a leader, we need to lead, and, and I think on this issue, we need to do it. We've made this a priority. I think we need to go, and I'm hoping that we can go even faster as we go through this process. I do think we're going to see cost savings over time. I do think that we're going to see major environmental benefits over time. And the technology's going to catch up. You can't just depend on, you know, waiting for the technology to be exactly where you want it to be before you start to say go and start to build out this infrastructure. The technology's catching up, but it's, it's taken a little while, but we're, we're going to get there. Car companies are moving in this place. It's time to go. So I'm really glad that we're doing this. I'm looking forward to, to voting for it. I know we've been laying the groundwork for this for a long time. We did make that policy decision on measuring the, the cost of carbon, and that's a, a part of all of this. And also our decision to make more of the fleet electric over time, not just within, you know, the, the Public Works Department, but all the departments. So hopefully, we can keep moving in that direction as the technology allows us to do so. But I do think, you know, the last thing I want to point out is, our main barriers here are not logistical, they're political. That's really what it comes down to. It's, it's a matter of opinion. It's a matter of what you think you need to do moving forward. We need to get over that political hump and just push forward on the things that are going to be the best for the city of Dubuque. And I think that electrifying our city fleet is one of the things by far that we can do right now, based on the information before us, to be able to make sure that we are reaching our greenhouse gas reduction goal and following our sustainability plan. So looking forward to moving this forward, hopefully. Any others? Okay. We have a motion by Farber and a second by Russell to receive and file and adopt this resolution. John, thank you very much for helping us out tonight. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel? Aye. Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number two is 2023 Pavement Marking Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
And a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $226,693 for the 2023 pavement marking project through the adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2023 pavement marking project through the adoption of the attached resolution. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input received.
Thank you. Back to the table for any discussion. Ms. Russell.
I know we do this annually, and I never, I never think to ask. Within the document, it says the, the Iowa, the state portion. I just wondered, how is that determined? How do we figure out how much of it is the state to pay and how much is ours?
Steve, are you available to answer that question? Oh, I'm sorry, Gus Sahoyas is on virtually?
Yep.
Oh, do you want to do it?
Gus would probably answer it better than I could.
All right. Gus Sahoyas, City Engineer, you want to address that?
I'm going to see, he might be there. Someone labeled here as caller number one. No, it doesn't look like I can unmute him. It just says, keep muted.
Steve, you want to give it another go?
Just not having luck with the virtual answering today, are we?
Steve Sampson Brown, Project Manager with the Engineering Department. So I can't give the exact funding split, but generally, the, the funds come from the road use tax fund through the state of Iowa. So generally, there's a formula in place. I don't know the exact formula. I apologize. We can follow up with that tomorrow with additional information. Gus would know it if he's able to, but generally, that's how it comes. So we do a local match, and then we get state funds.
Thank you.
So it's formula-driven, that's, that answer your question, then, Ms. Russell?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any others? All right. Motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number three is public hearing for sale of city-owned property at 590 Clark Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second. Motion by Resnick, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing Committee Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council hold a public hearing and approve the purchase agreement for 590 Clark Drive for the asking amount of $20,000 as presented. The property at 590 Clark Drive was acquired by the city of Dubuque by petition for title to an abandoned property on August 27, 2021, after a fire destroyed the previous structure in April 2021. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the purchase agreement for 590 Clark Drive for the asking amount of $20,000. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
No. And no input received.
All right. Back to the table for any discussion. Seeing none. Motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number four is fiscal year 2023 second budget amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending approval of the second fiscal year 2023 budget amendment, which amends the fiscal year 2023 budget for city council action since the first amendment to the fiscal year 2023 budget was adopted in October 2022. Adjustments to reflect new grants and reallocation of funding. A decrease in interfund transfers of $1,039,765 is also included. The amendment totals $2,970,333, an increased appropriation authority, and an increase in resources of $1,487,822. Additional revenues added in this amendment with offsetting appropriations are 14th Street Overpass Federal Grant of $2,280,000, the DRA private contribution for 14th Street Overpass, $750,000, Schmidt Island Trail Federal Grant for $615,000, Airport Construct Solar PV System Federal Grant for $306,543, the AmeriCorps Grants for $51,974, and related private participation of $27,657, Economic Mobility and Opportunity Cohort Grant of $35,000, Public Works Asphalt Milling reimbursments of $110,670, Housing Trust Fund Grant of $88,691, and Library General Gift Trust of $75,113. Reduced revenues reflected in this amendment with offsetting reductions in appropriations include U.S. 52 Central Traffic Implementation State Grants of $143,810, reduced to actual housing choice vouchers of $439,795, reduced to actual new downtown ramp bond proceeds of $2,186,822, the project delayed. This amendment includes an increase of $344,248 for Community Development Block Grant or CDBG-related programs. The increase in CDBG programs include Lincoln Elementary Wellness Program for $148,708, vacant abandoned buildings for $359, Housing Administration for $69,220, low and moderate income parks for $30,306, and aquaponic grants for $95,655. Decreases in CDBG programs include the target area for $1,963, property rehab for $121,176, housing grants for $16,649, low and moderate income park equipment for $148,709, Central Avenue Corridor for $20,252, purchase, resale, and rehab, $3,875, credit repair loans for $101, broadband for $100,000, IEDA St. John's, $244,787, and City Manager's Office for $80,000. This amendment also includes $152,425 in Community Develop Block Grant CARES Act funds for Four Mounds Build Dubuque Grants. In addition, this amendment corrects the budget for the sewer, CCTV inspection, forced main air release project, and cedar terminal assessments by adding the expenditure appropriation budget to offset the state revolving fund loan revenue budget of $1,247,303. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the second fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Do we have anyone in chambers to address us on this item? I see no one. Any virtual?
No.
Thank you.
No input received.
Thank you. We have any discussion? Seeing none. The motion is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. We have any public input this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, most excellent staff and city servants, public servants. My name is Rick Dickinson. I reside at 205 Hill Street. I have the pleasure of serving as the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. As far as, uh, uh, public comments, I have two things I wanted to touch on. First of all, I want to thank you for your vote on the charging stations. Dave Lyons from our office works very closely with the city on strategic initiatives and sustainable practices in our, in our community, because it makes us a community of choice. Because being a community of choice helps us recruit, retain, and create the workforce that we desperately need in the Midwest, in Iowa, and certainly in Dubuque. But perhaps most importantly, conversion to electric vehicles not only addresses the issues of climate change, which is real, but improves the quality of air that our children and our grandchildren breathe every day. The city's done a wonderful job with the reduction of particulate matter in the air, the little fuzzy stuff that's flying around that gets into our lungs and, again, into our children and our grandchildren. There was a time just 10 years ago, we were approaching non-attainment, meaning that our particulate matter in the air in Dubuque, Iowa was getting so high that we were going to be restricting businesses' ability to expand our community because we couldn't contribute any additional pollution in the air, parts per million particulate matter. But the city stopped burning its sewage and paid for a state-of-the-art water resource recovery center. And Lion Energy converted from coal to natural gas and eventually eliminated that production facility in our community altogether, and now it has dropped dramatically. The quality of air in Dubuque is as good as any place, if not better than any place in the Midwest. But smog, smog is on the rise, and smog can only be addressed by conversion to EV vehicles. You're right, it is a modest step. Dave Lyons has been working with your team to try to find, turn every stone to find dollars to expand charging stations and conversion to electric vehicles. I urge you to be much more aggressive than you have been. I know you want to be. I know it, it has to include the cost of carbon, but I urge you to work continually with Dave and your team to expand EV charging in vehicles. Don't buy another gas small vehicle in this town. Let's have it be an example of EV charging in electric vehicles. Let's have it be an example of EV charging in electric vehicles. Secondly, I want to thank the city manager and staff for a project that was just set as a public hearing for the McCoy project. It was announced several weeks ago that McCoy intended to purchase the McGraw-Hill building located in the port of Dubuque. There were some things that had to happen for that to become a reality. Yes, they had an option to purchase, conditional on making sure that it would work for their employees. And oftentimes, we criticize government because things take too long, or you can't come to agreement on things, but I just want to tell the citizens of Dubuque that this issue was brought to the city manager and his staff, the need to acquire parking space, the need to work out some details on the repurposing of the McGraw-Hill facility for McCoy Group, one of the fastest-growing companies in our community, and it didn't happen in a matter of months. It didn't happen in a matter of weeks and weeks. It happened in a matter of days. It's before you. You set a public hearing, and I hope that you can approve it on June 20th. I just wanted to say, thank you.
Well, thank you, Rick, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Seeing no one else here. Any virtual input?
No.
Okay.
And no input received.
All right. Then we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Destination Iowa Outdoor Recreation Fund Grant, Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
City manager Mike Van Milligan. Project manager Steve Sampson Brown is recommending city council approval for the city manager to execute the Destination Iowa Outdoor Recreation Fund Grant, and this is a project to build an outdoor amphitheater on Schmidt Island. The total project costs are $15,442,961. The Destination Iowa grant request was $5,784,961, and the city was awarded $3 million instead of the full grant request amount. As part of the grant application, the city had agreed to issue $6 million in downtown urban renewal debt, with the DRA making the debt payments. With the reduced grant award, the city would now be agreeing to issue downtown urban renewal debt in the amount of $8,784,961, and the DRA would be agreeing to make this increased debt payment. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Ms. Farber?
If I could ask Krenna if I need to accuse myself from this vote?
No, you do not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick?
Very quickly, this is very important for our, one of our top and high priorities of Schmidt Island, and we're making that a world-class location. So I'm looking forward to voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, Mr. Sprank?
I can just picture in a couple of years when it's done, no more, the backwater stage won't be in a parking lot, it'll be here. So that's what I'm looking forward to when it's finally finished, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually, it's very exciting to see pieces fall into place for Schmidt Island and what it can be. We are, I know, working very hard to try and make this a destination, and obviously with the Destination Iowa grant, to be able to do this piece of it, it's very important. So thank you for everyone who had, who's worked on this, and thank you to the DRA for this continued partnership. All right, well, motion is to receive and file and approve, so I'm sorry. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is St. Anne and Avalon Intersection Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. City engineer Gus Soias is recommending city council award the Public Improvement Construction Contract for the St. Anne and Avalon Intersection Reconstruction Project to offset construction LLC in the low bid amount of $207,547.60 through adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? I see none. Motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is proposed amendment to the 2020 National Electrical Code.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant Housing Director Michael Belmont is recommending city council approval of amendments to the City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances Title 14 Building and Development, Chapter 1 Building Codes. The National Electric Code, or NEC, is a model code which covers electrical installations for both residential and commercial construction. The proposed revisions of Section 334.10 would allow NM cable, or ROMEX, to be installed in multifamily residential construction above the second floor in certain types of construction. This aligns with the unamended National Electrical Code. After staff review of the codes was completed, the proposed amendments were brought to the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board for review and input. The Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board is a seven-member board tasked with reviewing proposed code adoptions for recommendation to the city council. On May 11, 2023, the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board held a special meeting virtually and voted to recommend approval of the proposed changes with no additional comments. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. So our next item, it talks about an international code, and so I'm just wondering, we have the National Electrical Code and we have the International Code, and there's some differences in that? And did you, what you talked about in your memo about the, about that specific type of wire being used above the second floor, is that the difference? Or are the codes different, and does it, is it different that matters or not really? I appreciate the input that our committee gave us, but I was just wondering, sometimes we cite one code and sometimes we cite another, and I guess I, there's no reason to be consistent with the codes. So those are my...
I do believe we are consistent, but I'm going to ask our building official, Michael Belmont, who interacts with the code board to answer, respond to your question.
Assistant Director Mike Belmont, Assistant Director of the Housing Department. To answer that question, the International Codes is a series of codes that has everything except for the electrical. The electrical code is the NEC code, that's a national standard, everybody uses that. The International Codes does not have an electrical version of the codes.
So our, what we're using right now is not compliant with the National Code?
No, so we have been using the NEC or National Electrical Code for many years, and in fact, in 2021, we adopted the 2020 NEC. This is a revision to an existing amendment that we have for the NEC.
So they change, so we change.
This amendment, this, the amendment that we had would not allow NM cable above the second floor. We went, what we're asking to do is go back to the unamended language in the NEC, which allows NM cable above the second floor.
See, so we're gonna, we'd like to keep it the way it is.
That's correct.
And we've determined that that's not a safety issue.
That is correct.
Great, thank you very much.
And the other piece I was just going to add is the NEC is what's adopted by the state of Iowa as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Ms. Rousell?
I'd just like to state that I was glad to see that the advisory board had reviewed this with no additional comments, because that is a board made up of people with great expertise, and when they bring something to us, I think that's really important. And I also liked the fact that you responded to some of their comments about making sure that we have licensed people doing the work. So I was glad to see that there's going to be more efforts towards that as well. So I found the memo to be very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Yeah, and I know we have, not to move ahead too fast, we have a number of issues here that involve codes and enforcement and some amendments and different pieces in the, it looks like the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board was hard at work, along with you, Mike, and your staff, so thank you very much to everyone who serves on that board and for your work on all this to make this all come before us.
Yep, thank you. Yes, they did, they did a lot of work on this one, a lot of codes.
Yeah, over a number of, number of weeks and months, it looks to, so thank you. All right, well, the motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is adoption of the 2021 International I-Codes.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and further move that requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant Housing Director Michael Belmont is recommending city council review and adopt the proposed amendments to the City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances Title 14 Building and Development, Chapter 1 Building Codes, 2021 International I-Codes. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
This is a lot of, lot of stuff in one, one sweep, but I guess, I just want a quick comment on a piece of the fire code that is in the National Code, or the International Code, but is not in our Dubuque Code, and that is residential sprinklers. And I understand why it's not in there yet. We have to draw, decide if it's, if the cost is worth the benefit. I think it is, I totally think it is, the folks that write the codes think it is. The concern is that we also have a problem with not enough housing in Dubuque, and if we require that, nobody else does, that new housing isn't going to happen in Dubuque, so I get the concern to it. We learned during the fire station relocation study that was done 10 years ago, and I think it'll be repeated, that the, that the density of the fire service that exists downtown probably can't exist in the rest of the city, and the density, the population that exists downtown doesn't exist in the rest of the city, and that the success of keeping the community fire safe in the future will be in code enforcement, along with good fire suppression and prevention methodologies. So if we have better building codes and building safety codes, we have less risk of people dying in house fires, plain and simple. It's pretty well-known in fire safety research that residential sprinkler will be quite a multiplier in the amount of time you have to get your shoes and socks and pants on and get out the door when your smoke alarms go off. It's not like you see in the movies where a sprinkler goes off and the whole building is flooded. They're local, the sprinkler under the fire goes, or above the fire goes off. It's kind of dirty water, it makes a mess, but it puts the fire out, keeps you from getting killed. So I think that it's time to start moving towards that level of code. If we're, once again, if we're going to be a leading community, we have to lead, and this is an area we've chosen not to lead it, and I totally get the why. It's really important that people build here, and we've got really, we've got better codes than we've ever had, so we're building better, better residential structures than we've been for a while. But I really think this is a missing piece that just needs some conversation, not tonight, but down the road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Well, I do appreciate you bringing that to our attention, as something to think about as we continue to have these discussions down the road. As you said, maybe tonight's not the time for that, but to be able to think about the pros and cons of that going forward, I think, sounds to me like an important discussion to have.
I want to be respectful to the work that's been done to get us to here tonight, because I know it's, it's a, it's a big fight, and that's a tough call. It's going to be a tough call when we have that conversation.
Certainly, yep. Okay, any other discussion? So we have multiple ordinances here, and the motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is adoption of the 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant Housing Director Michael Belmont is recommending city council review and adopt the enclosed amendments to the City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances Title 14 Building and Development, Chapter 1 Building Codes, Article H Plumbing Code. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. All right, motion then is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Amendment to Ordinance 14-9-1 Swimming Pools.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant Housing Director Michael Belmont is recommending city council review and adopt the enclosed amendments to the Dubuque, City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances Title 14 Building and Development, Chapter 9 Swimming Pools. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? I do feel they need to ask a clarifying question on this one, so this is, appears